Good evening and welcome to the Gardner City Council Candidate Forum. I'm Beth Felsky, President of Gardner Chamber of Commerce, and I'm excited to moderate today's forum. Special thanks to Hampton and for hosting us tonight. The Johnson County Public Policy Council is comprised of ten chambers of commerce in Johnson County, developed today's questions focusing on business and community issues. We will start with the candidates speaking alphabetically and rotating throughout the forum. Each candidate will give an introduction and opening statement for two minutes, followed by a timed question Q and A, with one and a half minutes to answer each question. We will end with one and a half minute closing statement. Due to time constraints, there will be no call-up questions, formal rebuttal time, or audience participation. This evening's event is being recorded and will be available on the Johnson County Public Policy Council's website, We please ask that you remain quiet for recording purposes. As a reminder, the Gardner Chamber of Commerce does not endorse candidates, but feels the importance to educate the community about each candidate to make an educated decision. So we're gonna start... Is my mic ready? Hello, hello? Test. Test. There we go. So we're gonna start with introductions. And to the candidates, tell us a little bit about yourself and why you want to serve on the Gardner City Council.
Hello everyone, I'm Mark Baldwin. First, I want to thank Beth and everyone at the Chamber for hosting this forum, and again to Hampton for providing the space. So, real simply, we can all give some speeches, but I've been on city council for a little while now, and one of the reasons that it's important to have good leadership in any position, but in particular in your local government, is because you have to partner with your outside agencies and you have to have continuity. There's a lot of stuff that gets done based off a previous relationship and how things work. So, for instance, we're just now getting the Gardner Road Bridge to get some attention. I voted on that in February of 2018, okay? We've been working with KODA on that for, even before that obviously, but literally for seven years to get that going. A little about me besides that I've been on council. So, I'm a father, I am a husband obviously, and more importantly, to the context of being here, I am a resident based taxes just like you. So, I feel the burden, I understand what all of our decisions do or don't do for you. There are people that would come to us and say, "I wish we had X." There are people that say, "I pay too much for Y." And you have to balance that. As a software engineer, I literally deal with thinking through problems logically every day. And that is one of my advantages, my strong suit, if you will, that I can bring to the table as someone on council now and hopefully in the next term. Thank you.
Thanks.
My best, yes?
Yes. Kelly?
Thank you, and thank you Beth and the Chamber for hosting us tonight. My name is Kelly Johnson. I have lived here at Gardner for the past six years. We moved here six years ago as renters, and then last summer we were able to purchase the house that we had been renting. So, we've gotten very involved with the school that my son has been in, with scouts, with our church. We are putting down rooms and we plan to stay for the long haul. We really love Gardner. I'm married to Scott. I have a mom, sometimes brought to a twelve-year-old boy. He is fantastic and I could ride around him all night, but that's not why I'm here. We have six dogs of our own and yeah, we keep pretty busy. My day job is paralegal. I've worked in both the law firm and corporate environments. I've supported attorneys in the areas of education, employment, insurance subrogation, contracts, and healthcare. My current role is as a regulatory finance specialist. So I do SEC filings. I'm really good at the degree and getting things done, following the instructions, getting all the details together, and getting past kind of the big idea phase into the actual implementation and turning things around. And that's what I'm hoping to be able to bring to city council with me, is that, you know, get it done sort of approach. I also have a very good listener and I look forward to being able to advocate for everybody in Gardner. I'm getting to know a whole lot of people who I didn't know before, getting to hear a lot of ideas and voices, and I am excited to be able to bring those to the city council in a way that maybe that they haven't, for people who haven't necessarily been able to get their one-day nights to do the public hearings, to be able to speak during those times, to bring their voices also. I'm good at counseling because I think I have the time.
Thank you. Dawn?
Hi, my name is Dawn Hurley. Thank you Beth and the council for putting this together. I am a lifelong Kansas resident. I actually grew up about three minutes from here in Beaumont. I used to live in Iowa, like, for twelve years. We specifically picked Gardner for the affordability and the closeness to Kansas City. So, we bought our first house and we lived in that house until we're still in. We have two kids, I have an eleven-year-old, the five-year-old. By day, I am a senior account. I've been an account for twenty years, over twenty years actually. And I have been in the HVAC, the construction, and the healthcare sector. So I've kind of had a lot of different areas that I've had experience in. So, the last four years, I've been pretty involved in the community. I am a PTO treasurer for my child's elementary school. And I'm also a work member for Gardner Kids Pride. So, that's really kind of motivated me. The leadership roles I'm in with those has kind of motivated me to want to do more, to get more involved. And I just, yeah, I want to get more involved on a fair scale. And I appreciate the leadership, the roles of sweet councilor. I do think that maybe some new, new crush ideas would be a good thing also.
Thank you. Steve?
Good evening, I'm Steve Shute. I'm the longest-termured person in this particular stage from being on the council since 2013. I was a servant for a year stint as mayor from 2017 to 2021. Yes, I was mayor during COVID. Probably get into some of that later on in this conversation. I am a thirty-one-year-plus systems professional, IT professional, working in back office primarily around healthcare. So I've seen a lot of that industry, a lot of all aspects of healthcare, from hospitals to clinics to insurance companies to pharmaceutical companies. I've probably consulted at every single area along the way. I'm very happily married, thirty-four-plus years, to my, well, my wife Kathy, and we have five boys, two of them born here in Kansas, the other three are born in Florida, which is where I was originally from. Moved here in 2005 and have not regretted that decision one little bit. I consider myself a Kansan. I consider myself a person who just loves this area. Best area in the entire country to raise a family. That's what we felt when we came to Kansas. So, feel like that has kind of shaped us from, you know, the way we are. We've kind of cultivated those Midwestern values and really appreciate the opportunities that this area has given to us and we wanted to give back, which is one of the reasons why I went to public office. When I came in 2013, the city of Gardner was out of mess. We had, at the time, three members of the council that I'd appointed instead of elected. I really felt we needed to have a voice within the community for people that actually were elected popularly by people in the community and have felt really a sense of pride that I've been able to help to get the community from where it was, where we were not able to get any kind of movement on commercial development into where we are today, where we're seeing something literally happening every week now is coming into town. And I think it's a really good thing for our residents. Johnson County's in trouble and I'm hoping that we, Gardner, can lead to make a difference in the county of all this. Thank you.
Thanks, John.
Good evening. Thanks for being here. I'm John Snyder. I'm currently running for the Gardner City Council. I'm running for the council because of a concern in the direction of the city. I've been a Gardner resident since 2008. Initially moved to Gardner after retiring from the US Army and began working for the Johnson County Sheriff's Office. To give you a little bit about my background, I served in the US Army for more than twenty years, was a Johnson County Sheriff for a short time, came to WJL Ministry of the Wyandotte County Sheriff's Office, and then I went back to the Department of the Army and finished my career as the Deputy Commander of the United States Disciplinary Marriage Support Department. I've been married to my beautiful wife for thirty-seven years. I have two wonderful daughters and four grandchildren. I recently relocated my mother from Ohio to Gardner and I've served my entire adult life. I understand what it's like to serve. I also understand what it's like to lead. I'm concerned about the growth of Gardner. Gardner is no longer the small-town community that it was when I moved here in 2008. Since explosion in population growth, it was about twelve thousand residents when I moved here in 2008 to about twenty-seven thousand residents today. We need to be more proactive in managing that growth. There are several missteps that led to this growth. One of them was the incorporation of the intermodal into Edmonton. We ended up with the intermodal in our backyard and the long-term consequences of the result of no revenue. I'm concerned that our current infrastructure revenue and single workers cannot keep pace with the exploding growth. I'm also concerned about safety. Eighty bridges and busy highways that cannot accommodate the newly generated traffic. We need to find creative ways to account for this growth that do not involve raising citizens' taxes. With rising property taxes and high interest rates, people are tired of seeing their hard-earned money being cycled through taxes. The city is in financial trouble and over the next five years, they may not be able to fulfill their service obligations. We need good leadership and good planning. Sure, we have some retail restaurants going up, but it may not be enough. We need to be more aggressive in our approach to attracting businesses that want to come to Gardner. It's time for fresh leadership. If elected council aggressively lead and push for greater retail and recreational opportunities in Gardner, especially for our youth, we need additional retail businesses to generate more revenue for our city to accommodate our growth.
Thank you. That's time.
Thank you.
We're now going to transition into the Q and A. As a reminder, you'll have a minute and a half to respond to the question. We're gonna start with Kelly. What are the most important priorities for the city to attract and retain business in Gardner?
I think there's a couple of things that are really important as when you try to attract and retain businesses. One is making Gardner a very welcoming place to businesses who want to come here. A lot of that is going to come from our people. We have a reputation for having that small-town feel still, even though we are rapidly growing. And I believe that businesses and business owners really like that. They like customers who will come, who will become their extended family, who will keep coming and supporting them, their businesses, who will come and watch their kids play football or whatever because they're going to be, as they come here, incorporating themselves into our town and investing in our town. And to see our residents supporting them, I think, will be a huge draw. I think another thing will be careful planning and figuring out where are the best places for the businesses, what the best ways to develop the areas around here are. Because we do still have a lot of, especially farmland, that's going to be developed over the coming years to really put a lot of good thought and consideration to that and to do it in a way that is cost-effective, I think will make a big difference to the businesses who are coming.
Thank you. And Dawn?
Could you repeat that question, please?
Yes. What are the most important priorities for the city to attract and retain business in Gardner?
Well, as I stated in my opening statement, low taxes is one of them.
Oh, I'm sorry. It's Dawn Hurley's question.
I'm Dawn Hjort. Sorry. My husband's named John, so please.
You said it.
I think small businesses will need space to come. So I think making downtown, the destination downtown, I feel like that would help get some people to come. I also think maybe the city could get behind small businesses, like provide workshops or provide just some aid for them to come here. Obviously, I don't know if that's in budget because, you know, I haven't got any more of that line yet. But that would be something that would help. And like Kelly said, like just keeping costs low so that they would be able to make money here. And yeah, just have a safe, nice place for everyone to come shop.
Thank you. Steve?
Thank you, I appreciate it. Let's get to the rest facts. We are in a rapidly growing area. We understand that. One of the problems that you have with growth is that you have to have capacity for the growth. What people don't understand is that when you go into a growth mode, most of the infrastructure that you use when you have the ground, water, sewer lines, electrical lines, that kind of infrastructure. We have been spending a lot of money over the last several years on large projects to expand our water treatment plant, to expand our wastewater plant. We're in the middle of a massive expansion at the Kill Creek Wastewater Treatment Facility and we're going to be able to accommodate the growth that's happening on the other side of the interstate. When we were working with the Kansas Development and Urban Environment on that, not one issue specifically. We were, we answered a lot of different stages on the way we wanted to put a wastewater treatment plant on the east side of I-35. We were not able to do it. So we had to pivot and move into growing our existing facility, growing the footpart of that facility and we're going to be able to accommodate that. That takes some time. We started that back in 2016, I think, looking at some of those aspects before I became mayor. When I became mayor, we made the deliberate decision to go across the interstate. The gravelled road started on 175th and I-35. We started New Charles Parkway, which is going to be the financial on the east side of I-35. That's not happening in a month, or a year, or five years, three to ten years. It takes time. But I think we're moving in the right direction. Thank you.
And Dawn?
Thank you. So, what really attracts people to Gardner? Our businesses, small businesses, or large businesses is the growth, right? That's one of the things that is challenging here, but it's also one of the things that makes it attractive for businesses. And I believe that if we aggressively pursue businesses, commercial businesses, and small-town businesses, that we can make a destination instead of just a city, right? So that we don't travel to other cities to shop or recreate and eat and spend our tax dollars elsewhere and we can not only spend our tax dollars here in Gardner, but we can get other people to come here to Gardner to spend their tax dollars as well. And I think we're moving in that direction, but we just have to be more aggressive. Thank you.
And back to you, Mark.
So, in 2017, 2018, my main goal was to get the cross I-35. And we did that. Now we have to continue to put the infrastructure in and see the benefits of the growth that we do have. We're the fastest-growing city in the state. That is because of our residents, right? Businesses follow rooftops. And we have grown outside of our boundaries even quickly and businesses are starting to follow. Now we have a company that is trying to connect the dots between companies looking for somewhat a city, you know, a metropolis with our demographics. And we're trying to be receptive to the development asks, right? We redid our land development code about ten years ago, eighteen years ago. And part of that was to stay with the times. And it also means that even today, we have to change and be willing to work with developers as they come in with this new idea, but at the same time, keep the core of what Gardner is. We are a big town, we're not a small city now, but what we are is still a small-town field of people. So, as we continue to grow, if we keep that, the businesses will continue to follow us.
Thank you. This next question is kind of a deeper dive into what we've been talking about here. Gardner is one of the fastest-growing cities in the metro. So how can the city best meet the demands of the rapid growth in the community in terms of infrastructure and municipal services? We're gonna start with Dawn.
Could you repeat? I'm sorry.
Yes, absolutely. Gardner is one of the fastest-growing cities in the metro. So how can the city best meet the demands of the rapid growth in the community in terms of infrastructure and municipal services?
I think they're doing a good job right now. Honestly, there's a lot of new developments coming in. I know a few of them are at different stages, but they're happening. And fixing the road, the bridge was huge. I think that will help. What was the second part?
Just meeting the demands in terms of infrastructure and municipal services.
Yeah, I think they continue to just have developments come.
Thank you. Steve?
Well, this is one of the things I've actually been talking about previously. When I came in to the city council in 2013, we had an infrastructure that was reach capacity. We knew that that was the case even before we started to see the potential growth. We did see a dip in the growth curve when we were having the Great Recession back in 2009 to 2012, which, to be honest with you, probably was a blessing in disguise because a lot of us would be able to take a pause and reevaluate what the state of our infrastructure was, below and above ground. And as part of that initiative, when I started on council, we started working on redoing the Grand Land Development Code. We started doing an incentive policy for development to make us competitive with other areas of the Kansas City Metro. We started doing planning for our additional water and wastewater needs. Again, you've got to start that work way in advance before you need it. And so I think we've done that. And I think we, especially from the standpoint of our water facilities, I think we're probably as in good a position in our water as anybody in the Johnson County area. And with regard to our wastewater, I think we will be better than most places in the county once our new expanded Kill Creek facility comes online. We do have some catch-up to do on our transportation infrastructure. Unfortunately, we can't do it ourselves. The Gardner Road Bridge is a KODA responsibility. I know everybody has some of the endless saga of 56th Highway. That is also a KODA responsibility. And we have to work better at getting on the calendar and being able to push KODA to do the right thing. Thanks.
And John?
One thing that we have to do is we've got to equip letting the growth manage the city and have the city manage the growth. We already know that we're growing at about a thousand residents per year. And so we can plan for that infrastructure. And good planning is the key. But what no one's telling us is that it costs money for the infrastructure. And they have to figure out, we have to figure out, if I'm elected, where that revenue is going to come from. And it goes back to working with commercial businesses to come into Gardner's, make it attractive for them, not with incentives, but showing them the benefit of coming to Gardner so that we can generate that revenue for the infrastructure. If you look on Indeed, there's about two thousand jobs in the local area, right? And I'm sure everyone's noticed that the highways, even the traffic in Gardner has become tremendously more than it used to be. So we have to manage or project how that's going to look five, ten years down the road. And then we have to start that planning now. We can't wait for the growth to come and then start working. And as far as taking so long for the bridges, we have representatives in Congress and state representatives that we can influence to help us with the state-level decisions to get our broken bridges fixed quicker.
Thank you, Mark.
Okay, so we're uniquely positioned in that we actually own our utilities, electric, water, wastewater. That's extremely rare, in general, let alone in the Johnson County area. And we've done a very good job of positioning them to be successful. I've never wanted them to be profitable. They can't lose money and cause us problems that we have to raise rates for all of our residents. But they shouldn't be exorbitant, which is why, you know, helped push to eliminate the PCC and the electric funds and we can give those funds back to people. We're doing a really good job of looking out ten years at a time at water, wastewater, all these big projects, thirty million dollars here, thirty million dollars there. You have to plan for them early. But one of the things that people may get confused about is with roads, you've got, it's a double-sided coin. You've got Main Street through town, you've got both the interchanges. Those are KODAs. We don't get a whole lot of say. We push as much as we can. But at the end of the day, that's a government agency doing their thing. But what we did do in the last decade is implement a pavement management program. So now we are trying to take care of all the streets in town and prevent them from degrading even worse. So I feel like we're actually doing a very good job at this and will continue to do it as we go forward.
Thank you. And Kelly?
I agree. I think that the groundwork that's been laying has been very good. It's been strong. I think the work that's been done with the water lines and with wastewater needs, I think is fantastic. With the roads have been KODA after finally we worked on Gardner Bridge, with the construction that's coming eventually, hopefully, to revamp the intersection at I-35 and 175th. I think it's all very positive. I do agree with John that we need to figure out some ways to finance all this development that isn't going to hit the taxpayers' property taxes. Whether that is by removing, say, tax abatements like what is currently set up with the developer for the area over by 199th and Gardner Road, by not having the tax abatements. That brings in some revenue and it keeps that up with the residents. But in its place, we do need to have some other sort of draw to get developers to want to come and develop here anyway. We also need to be able to, with the developers, sit down and work out what we want to have done and what they want to do in a way that isn't going to cause us to have to go back and kind of redesign later or make a lot of changes, like what we're seeing now with the plans for the adult living area and the changes that we've been making there. Because those end up either disappointing because it wasn't what we wanted or costing more, and that's not good for everybody.
Thank you. This next question, we'll start with Steve. How can the city cultivate a thriving downtown Gardner that attracts both residents and visitors, specifically to the downtown area of Gardner?
It's said that, thank you for the question. It's said that the health of a community is really tied directly to all this downtown. In 2017, 18, we commissioned a study within the city to put together a downtown revitalization plan called Destination Downtown. We've actually begun the process of purchasing land in downtown to be able to build a, basically a sense of place within the community, make it walkable. One of the issues that we run into is that people are not real enthusiastic about walking on 56th Highway in downtown Gardner for a variety of reasons. It's not pedestrian friendly. And we actually are, we've been looking at ways with KODA to be able to lead some of that. But again, it really comes down to, we've got to calm the traffic and that's going to be a difficult road to go. Again, you have to have a lot of partnerships and a lot of things going there. But also, we have to look at how we can, now we actually have small businesses that are performing in place for downtown for beautification. We have a lot of disneyed buildings. There's not a lot you can do about those disneyed buildings because they're historic. You have to keep the bones, you have to keep the floor plans in some cases. But we can definitely beautify, create leaves and things like that to be able to make it more attractive. We have, you know, we have a clot now that's over at Oak Street, which is a really nice touch. But we've got to do more things like that. We do have a revitalization committee, a neighborhood community with partnership with the Chamber, and we'd like to be able to leverage that as well.
Thank you. John?
Well, I think the first thing that we have to do is we have Well, I think the first thing that we have to do is we have to work on the traffic, uh, down Main Street. Because, uh, I'll be, I'll be honest with you, sometimes I avoid it myself because, because it's, uh, it, it, the traffic is so heavy downtown, especially at peak hours. So, uh, once we do that, you know, we, we don't have a really good way. We can reach out to other cities who have, who have done this, and we can ask them how they did that, you know? Uh, we have a, those beautiful disordered buildings down there, uh, that, you know, potentially we could work with the Disordered Society and maybe reface, but we gotta get some good small businesses in there that want to come here so that we can make it more attractive, much like other cities have done. And I think, uh, if we can do that, uh, and we can make it a, a walking, uh, town, you know, and then we can get, we can attract more people that, uh, that could, uh, would want to come, as I stated before, to make it more of a destination than just a city. Right now, there's, there's, there's a few businesses down there. I think the coffee shop did a great job, you know, refacing the building and, uh, you know, uh, there's a great hangout down there. I see people out there all the time, like, it's always packed. And I think that if we could get more of that, if we, uh, if we reach out to, uh, people who want to own small businesses and, and look for ways to get them downtown and, uh, look for ways to, uh, reface the area down there so that we can make more of a walking, uh, attraction down there.
Thank you. Mark?
Okay, so downtown, we have the Destination Downtown Plan that got passed in 2018. Um, it is a plan, and the idea is to revamp that area. The problem is that that is not something that we just do ourselves. That's gonna take a partnership with all those businesses, which is why we partnered with the Chamber. Um, we helped create a historical district down there, um, just recently. So that helps with those buildings and allowing those business owners to be able to leverage that from tax credits and that type of thing. Um, but we also have to realize that we are splintered in our growth. So you've got downtown that you have to grow at the same time that you're growing east and going across I-35. And you have to continue that growth to be able to fund anything you do at Destination Downtown. Now, in the past two, two-and-a-half years, we have acquired two properties, uh, behind City Hall. Um, and we are working to have all of that in place so that when a developer does want to come downtown, that we can help facilitate, um, issues that we would have with that land because the buildings are already removed and we can streamline the process. Um, so that plan is in place, and we're hopeful that it will come to fruition sooner than later. Um, but it does take a partnership with the business community.
Thank you. Kelly?
Thank you. Um, I think we've got a couple things going on here. Um, one is as far as city council goes, it's my understanding that city council doesn't actually bring the business in itself. Um, but like Mark was saying, like Steve was saying, through the partnerships with the Chamber of Commerce, um, with getting to know other business owners in the area, that those connections are made and then businesses are brought into town through that. Um, I think as far as Destination Downtown goes, I think the best place is just to start, to get out of the vision phase and to make a move. Um, it seems to me that, uh, some of the, I'm looking for maybe somewhat of the easier places to start would be with a pavilion that we've been talking about, um, for the farmer's market. To have a big area that's covered where the farmer's market members can come and they can be there on Thursdays, ready to shine, um, where it's covered. And then throughout the rest of the week, we have that space available for concerts and for other events. Um, I think that would be, in the grand scheme of things, a simple-ish sort of place to start. Um, but that could get people kind of into that mode of coming downtown and to seeing what there is to do and to, um, just coming together as a community.
Thank you. And Dawn?
Could you repeat the question?
Sure. Um, how can the city cultivate a thriving downtown gardener that attracts both residents and visitors?
Um, honestly, you four have pretty much the same ideas I did, um, with regards to this traffic. Um, it's definitely something that keeps walkers from not shopping, like downtown shopping. Um, and I think John had the idea to maybe reach out to other city councils and see how they went about getting there. I know, like, Easton has a really nice downtown and, and the park, just that's, that would be amazing to have here. And then, like, we could have community events more, um, on Main Street. And then I love that Kelly's, well, it's not an idea that R.B. is doing, but, um, at the farmer's market, the pavilion, um, that would be another good thing. Um, that, it would just be getting people to come here, so.
Thank you. We're gonna transition, um, to workforce. Attracting and maintaining a capable workforce is a challenge for many cities across the state. What can the city of Gardner do to build a qualified workforce? We're gonna start with John.
Well, first of all, we have to have, uh, good leaders in place that take care of the employees. Uh, we have to, uh, um, we have to have a good city. We have to have a good strategic plan. We have to have a good product that people want to be a part of. And we gotta make them want to be a part of the team in a growing community as great as Gardner. And then we gotta keep them, right? Uh, we can't, uh, it, uh, you know, sometimes it's pay, but I think sometimes it's more recognizing people for the work that they do, getting them here, uh, and keeping them here, uh, long-term, right? High turnover rate, uh, is not good for the city. Keeping people in place, uh, as far as, uh, the, the workforce, um, is, is, is a good practice. And, uh, letting them know that you care about them and, and, uh, and, uh, that they're, you know, they're just an asset to the community and to the city, uh, is a good start.
Thank you. Mark?
So I think when you asked that question, for all the workforce you need for, um, the city in general, not city employees, um, but by certain ways. Um, for city employees, we have a, um, essentially a, an advancement and a raise potentially every year. Um, and we always are looking at our benefits to help, uh, manage those for them. Um, furthermore, we adjust pay scales, um, a few years ago, probably five now, to help with, um, rising pressure from other municipalities around us that really cut down on us losing our officers, and we've been able to bring them in and retain them. As far as private business, um, government should stay out of that a whole lot. Um, we have to be, again, in a position to help them with the ability to move into a property, um, to have their utilities, uh, work with them on the MOUs and, um, other contracts to help, uh, horse trade, we need this, we want that. How do we get it together? Um, because we can't just throw pipes in, kind of wait 20 years and hope somebody shows up. So, um, one of the things that, um, I feel like we do well is the school district partners with JCC. And we have a lot of people that, um, do want to work here because it's a great place to live. And that will bring in those workers, and then they will stay, and then that helps the business grow. Can you bring in further business for them?
Thank you. Kelly?
Can you repeat the question, or whatever, please?
Yes. Attracting and maintaining a capable workforce is a challenge for many cities across the state. What can the city of Gardner do to build a qualified workforce? And just to clarify, whether that's city staff or private business.
Thank you. Um, a couple of things, like Mark was saying, as far as the city staff goes, making sure that there's room for growth, making, um, in their own careers, um, making sure that the budget is set that can accommodate raises each year because it's very harmful for families to be, um, living in an area where the cost of living continues to go up, but the, um, rate they're being paid is not, um, is not keeping up with that. Um, for workers in general businesses in the area, um, I think it's gonna be to, one, continue to make order and invite you to be, and two, to communicate really well. Um, I think that's someplace where maybe we can try to do a little bit better. We have a lot of ways to be able to communicate with both residents and with businesses in the area, um, through social media, through the websites, through, um, conversation, through the newsletter. I think we need to make sure that we are out there making our message known, um, making any changes known, um, that we are interacting with them and communicating really well um, so that nobody feels like they are uninformed or like they're being left in the dark. Um, I think that would go a long way to helping workers, um, and employers feel like they're welcome and like they know what's going on.
Thank you. Dawn?
So I immediately went to, um, workers, uh, out of the labor unions. Um, they, they take care of their people, they make sure that they're well-qualified, they, um, they have great benefits, like, just, I think more contracts with labor unions would be helpful. Um, and then like Kelly said, communication, um, is really big. And, um, I'm not good with my words up there, so my answers are gonna be short for the rest of the talk, so.
Thank you. Steve?
Yeah, so, uh, a couple of things. I, I'm gonna go back to a time when I was, uh, mayor, I was in, 2019, this was before COVID. And I went to a presentation and I actually asked, uh, the KCADC, Kansas City Area Development Corps, uh, Council Director for a, a sit-down with folks that were business leaders, uh, big influencers within the Kansas City Metro area. And they were, they put up a map of the KCADC, you know, service area. And it's not, holy, but Gardner was literally not on the map. And I went up there and I said, "We've gotta put Gardner back on the map because Gardner's not on this map and it needs to be. One of the fastest-growing regions of Johnson County, we need to be." We had a seat at the table. And as I said, it took several years of work to even get us on the map to be able to attract the businesses that we're attracting now. Now, attracting businesses also means we have to try to qualify people to run them and be employed by those businesses. Kansas City Area Development Council, which we are partnered with, is working with municipalities throughout Johnson County, especially with the Panasonic plant that just came in over at the Soto, to bring those people in. Understand that that skilled labor force is not necessarily our strong suit here in Kansas and in Johnson County. We have biotech workers coming in, we also have, uh, university across, you know, uh, locations that are starting to shop in Johnson County. But we need to be much more aggressive as, and helping to till the soil, to, to fertilize the soil so we can grow those kinds of businesses here, and, uh, that takes a continuity.
Thank you. Next question. What part, if any at all, should the city play in providing attainable housing options in the city of Gardner? Mark, I'll start with you.
Interesting question. Um, so you have to make clear delineation with what cities can and can't do and what they should and shouldn't do. So for all intents and purposes, the city should be continuing to work with Mark and, um, Met America Regional Council, um, and other housing groups. We just had our Development Director go and meet in Aletha with several municipalities in the area a month ago on this very topic. So part of that is looking at land development codes, um, what are the current trends? Um, how do we get a developer in that will put homes in that aren't $350,000? Uh, but that's, that's extremely hard to do. Um, at the same time, that's private business. Housing, any business, needs to be ran by the market. And city government shouldn't be subsidizing it. We have to be a good partner. We have to work and, uh, be cognizant of the changing times and how we can try to make sure we have, uh, all tiers of housing. One problem we had is we didn't have, uh, tier-two or tier-three housing, so people would leave Gardner, um, starting to get a little infill there. So we just have to keep working as a partner, but we can't drive that bigger piece.
Thank you. Kelly?
Thank you. Um, I put out a survey on my, uh, campaign website when I first opened my campaign. And the first question on it is, what is, what do you think should be the highest priority for the Gardner City Council in the coming years? And the top two answers that I've gotten on that, um, have been supporting mobile businesses, which is what Chamber of Commerce is all about, and also offering affordable housing options. Um, people here, I think there's people who want to move here, um, but with the developments that we've had coming in at the, you know, $350,000, $400,000 range, people can't afford it. And housing is basically, at least starter housing is getting priced out of Johnson County altogether and people are having to go further south. Um, so I do think that affordable housing is a big concern, and I would love to see some developments come in that have more of that lower-end, um, pricing range, like Mark was talking about, maybe more in the, you know, $150,000 to $200,000 area. Um, there, somebody who is starting out can afford to move and be able to pay their mortgage with just one job and won't have to work two or three jobs to support their family. Um, I think then from there, if we have good businesses and they grow their business, then they'll stay and they will end up being those families who've been here for generations.
Thank you. Dawn?
Like, like Mark said, I think the tiers of housing is something that's definitely needed here. Um, compartmented buildings and, um, townhomes and just maybe, uh, entire house. People might be able to afford to start there and then get a house. But it's also, yeah, the prices are going up on all housing, so, um, it's not really a... I forgot where I was going with that, but, um, yes, I think definitely bringing in more tiers of, of housing will definitely help out.
Thank you. Steve?
Okay, so we actually started looking at this several years ago. Um, when I, uh, became, when I became on council, we actually had a very low amount of, of, of rental housing within the community. Um, they were concentrated in two or three areas near downtown. Um, and that was because the people in the community didn't want that kind of housing within our town. Um, obviously, that was unrealistic, especially given the fact that we were on an edge for growing metropolis and the next urban area. And so, uh, when I became mayor, we decided to have a deliberate, uh, plan to be able to welcome the market into our community and not put robots on those kind of developments as part of the Land Development Co. re-rank into place in 2018. Um, and I think that, to be honest with you, we've opened this, this community up to a, a, a very diverse and, um, wide range of, so, you know, the specific amount of groups because of the fact that we made that decision. Uh, the way to keep the costs down, there's two ways. One is you've got to have more housing, uh, supply and demand. You have higher non-supply, you have, uh, you know, you have a steady demand or higher demand, your housing costs are gonna be somewhat equal or, or, or flat. If you have a lower build-in housing but a higher demand, you're gonna have to see how the housing prices go up. Um, as an example, my house, when I bought it, $2,005,000, it was $203,500. We just got a tax bill and it rated our houses $430,000, okay? That doesn't happen at a level, it happens at the county level. We've got to work on trying to get that under control, so, thanks.
And John?
I see this as a significant problem. And I, I recently had experience with this when, as I stated before, relocated in my mother's garden. Uh, finding affordable housing was very, was very difficult, uh, quite honestly. Uh, and when I moved here in 2008, a lot of people were coming here because it was affordable housing. And it, and as I stated before as well, on Indeed, there's about 2,000 jobs paying about $20 an hour. And as a result, a lot of people are commuting, uh, to Gardner and Edmonton to work, but then they're, but then they're, they're commuting back to wherever they live because, uh, it's affordable wherever they're coming from. So we have to do a good job with first buying our housing. And we do need more affordable housing. Uh, that will do solve two problems. It'll keep the residents here in Gardner to spend their tax dollars, and also it'll cut down on the traffic going both ways. So I think that's a, that's a significant issue for the city council and, and the city itself. Thank you.
Thank you. This next question, we'll start with Kelly. What role should Gardner have in economic development to bring capital investment to the community?
Sorry, thank you for just a moment. Um... That one, I am not entirely sure how to answer. I think there is some room for some tried and true methods. I think there's also some room for some creative thinking to try to figure out maybe some incentives that aren't super costly for the town and for the budget, but that would draw investors here. Because we want people who are going to come, who are going to develop, who are going to invest in Gardner. But we need them to be able to do that without the city having to foot a big bill for that. So I think that's where talking to people and getting some ideas and, you know, kind of putting out there that for right now, there's no bad ideas, we want to hear what you have to say, we want to hear what you think. I think we put those together and we might be able to come up with a plan that would draw investors here, draw in some of the capital, the capital funds into development and make Gardner different than the towns around us.
Thank you, Dawn.
I'm not gonna lie, I don't know a whole lot about this capital investment wise, but I know there are a bunch of subject matter experts that are around the city council, around the government, and even around our citizens. So I think I would just let those experts figure it out and then I could help with the plan.
Thank you, and Steve?
Okay, I'm gonna use an old farmer's analogy here. This is where in Kansas and all. And our farmer's analogy is that if you have fertile soil, we can grow anywhere unless you till it. And so that's what we've got to do within, within Gardner. I mean, we have a fertile, we have a fertile soil. We got transportation links north, south, east, west, we're in the center of the country, we have a major rail line going through our town and an executive airport on the northeast side with the M747 jets. I don't know of any community out there that hasn't we have. So really what it comes down to is showing everybody what we got and showing that we're ready for growth and showing that we have the infrastructure in place to manage it. And I am very proud of the fact that over the last 12 years working within this council and as mayor, we worked very, very hard to get us to the position where we're able to show what we got. And I believe that we don't have to give much incentives, we had to give some incentives across the interstate, tax improvement funding and community investment districts. The reason why is because there was nothing there, it was literally a farmer's field. And so we had to till it, we had to cultivate it, we had to give those incentives. But right now in Southside Gardner, we don't have any incentives going down there, we don't have any TIF or any tax improvement financing or, or community improvement districts, that's all happening organic. But guess what? We get every single penny of taxes coming from that development. That's how you do it. You build something, you till it, and you let the corn grow. Thanks.
Thank you, Dawn.
Well, I really hate to use Steve any credit, but I will say that the proximity to the airport really is a great seller. And then, and then the second one is what we've been talking about all night long is the growth here in Gardner. I'm not a fan of incentives, I saw that happen in Kansas City, Kansas, and the revenue never came. So I think the incentive to get the capital investment here is to sell what we already have in Gardner, which is, which is a great community, low crime, proximity to the airport, and the huge growth that we have here in Gardner.
Thank you, Mark.
Okay, so economic development, you've got a couple different facets. One is we have essentially a set of lobbyists, if you will, that work for us in DC to help get us capital funding or from feds for big infrastructure projects. So that's one way that we're helping to bring better ones in. We also are actively always working on bringing in more grants. We actually have a grant writer that does a great job for us. We used to have the Southwest Johnson County EDC, that has now declined. So the city and the chamber actually, we've got some responsibilities, but the city pulled back underneath its umbrella and we started sending the mayor and our city administrator to places like ICFC, which is a conference for economic development, and we made some relationships. That's also where we met the company that we now retain that is helping connect all those other businesses out there with us. What it comes down to is the demographics. The businesses don't care what we put on a billboard if you don't have the demographics. They're going to come if you have 10,000 people and you have median income of X. They're going to come if you have 30,000 people and Y. So at the end of the day, we have to continue to be one of the safest cities in Kansas and continue to grow so that those demographics are attracted to those businesses and they will put down roots here.
Thank you. Since we're talking about taxes, what are your views on the value Gardner businesses receive for their local tax dollars? And what budget changes, if any, would you propose? And we're going to start with Dawn on this question.
Could you repeat that one again?
Yes. What are your views on the value Gardner businesses receive for their local tax dollars? And what budget changes, if any, would you propose if elected?
What, what was the last part? Sorry.
What budget changes, if any, would you propose for how businesses are taxed?
I don't think I would change anything as far as how businesses are taxed. I don't know the numbers, so I can't make a good response. So I'm gonna obviously let the other people talk because I was, yeah.
And Steve?
I understand, so it's, the, the numbers aren't easy. I'm telling you, it's very, very difficult to decipher the property tax and corporate income tax code of the United States of Kansas. So I'm gonna go take it from another direction. Right now, the Johnson County, Johnson County property tax levies are done through the Johnson County Tax Department Office. So that, they do, they do an evaluation, evaluation of properties at a commercial level and then they tax the businesses at 25%. 25% of value ratios. That's a high number, but businesses are willing to pay it. Although there are, there are a lot of appeals that are happening with businesses to try to go with that levy. What we offer in Gardner is one of the lowest mill levies in the entire county. We have the second lowest mill levy on the overall park and we have a significant commercial tax base that's greater than ours. But we're working on getting that increased. What we do have also, as Mark mentioned earlier, is our utilities, our own electric, our own water, wastewater utilities. Our electric utilities are extremely well-run. I mean, we're 25 to 30% below equivalent rates for Everji for the same, for the same size businesses and may water hours requirements. It's going to increase even more, and, and ours is increasing even more when Everji gets their rate increase that they just pushed through the Kansas Utilities Commission. So I am, I believe we're in a great position just from that perspective of electric, water, wastewater rates. We're more competitive than anybody else in the metro, specifically because of the fact that we own our utilities.
Thank you, Dawn.
Well, first, what I would say is that people need to petition the Johnson County Commission to see if we can get our rates lowered for our property tax. And that really goes to fall on Gardner. I don't, I don't think high property taxes or, or high taxes are really benefit any level. And, and that goes back to finding alternative ways to generate revenue so that those corporate taxes can be lowered. Because those could be incentives to get people here in the Gardner if we can have a lower corporate tax. But, you know, until, you know, until we start that growth of getting businesses into Gardner, unfortunately, you know, the residents and the property owners are going to have to flip that bill.
Thank you, Mark.
Okay, so business owners and really residents kind of are on the same boat. Everybody's already alluded to it, but we can't control Johnson County's appraisals, we can't control the taxpayer. So all that's out. The only thing we can really do is provide a good value with the dollars we're provided. So we have to be a good steward of the money that comes in. I feel like we do a very good job of that. Now that we have the payment management program, we're trying to keep everybody's roads in better shape. We actively are trying to get the worst and keep improving them. We have excellent snow removal in the winter, everybody's always raving about it. Steve hit on utilities, that is a huge asset, it's not there for the tiny taxes, but it's another piece of the puzzle for businesses. You know, we, I was on the EEW, then it became UAC, for seven years, was president after three before I was on the council. So utilities is something near and dear to me. We ran it like a business and we, that puts in a good position for where we are today. And we're able to absorb when you have the polar vortex and everybody else can afford their electric bill, but we didn't have that problem. There's all kinds of things about that. The last thing I'll say about taxes here and the value is that only 14 cents a dollar is what's going to the city. I'd love for it to be less than 14, but it is 14. The other 86 are going to the county and to the school district. So I feel like we're doing a whole lot with variable.
Thank you, and Kelly?
Thank you. I'm with Dawn in that I don't, I haven't been through the budget line by now and I wasn't privy to a lot of those conversations. Well, I was a part of those conversations when the budget was being fully determined. So I feel like at some point I can't expound too much on budgetary questions. But I do think that what is offered both to residents and to businesses, for the most part, is a very good option in Gardner with the utilities that we have and with the snow removal, with our public, public safety, our police force is fantastic. And so that helps, keeping the crime rate low, which is all very good. I do think that there may be some room. I don't, I don't know how much of the road work and fixing puddles is strictly the KOD thing. I know that we could be more proactive in communicating with KOD and staying closer to the top of their radar. I do know in talking with one of the KOD representatives when they were here, talking about the new interchange that is being proposed for I-35 and 175th Street. When I asked about how that would be financed, they said, "Well, it probably would end up being about half KOD, half Gardner." So there again is where we'll see tax money that would need to be coming towards the road repair. So if that is happening in other places, I think there's room for improvement with how tax dollars, or the value you are getting for your tax dollars, if any part of that is because our budgets haven't been able to accommodate that.
Thank you. Next question, I'll start with Steve. What is your overall vision for the future of Gardner? Your overall vision for the future of Gardner?
Sounds like a last question.
We're getting close, I promise.
I've made it clear over the last 12 years what my vision for Gardner is, and that is, there was a lot of time before 2013 where we weren't really sure what Gardner would be when we grew up. Obviously, the Intermodal decision was a horrible decision in 2009, it sets us back several years. We still have the Intermodal on our doorstep and not getting any tax revenue from or tax benefit from it. And we can't control what Edmonton does on our doorstep, which is the worst part of all of it. But we got past that. We decided to make lemonade out of lemons, in a way. And we, I think we prospered because of it. Our, our eastern gateway, the Intermodal's eastern gateway is now in Gardner and Sun and Edmonton. We have a bunch of, you know, retail outlets going in there, a lot of our restaurants, we understand that. And I know the complaining out on CFG that we have too many fast food places, but guess what? Those aren't for us, those are for the people who are working at the Intermodal, 4, 5,000 people that are out there every day that have shift work that they only get away for 30 minutes to get their lunch. So we're getting a lot of activity there. I wouldn't see that continue. I wouldn't see us, you have a place that we could live, work, and play. Bring a manufacturer to town so we can have high pay, yes, a little bit of unique jobs that will come in here to be able to provide a stable workforce that is high-earning. And so we're with Johnson County, we're working with the KSCDC, we're working with all these great entities to bring a manufacturer to town. That's what I want to see. And I think that we're on our way to getting that done.
Thank you, Dawn.
If I were going to give you a vision statement, I would say to be a destination city that provides exceptionally, exceptional services to its citizens. And I truly believe that Gardner has the capability of doing that.
Thank you, Mark.
So we have to be a vibrant community, right? We've transitioned. When I got here in 2003, we were a third of the size of where we are today. We have grown leaps and bounds and with that comes different aspects, right? You're gonna outgrow your, your housing and it's gonna get expensive. You're gonna be on the cusp of Johnson County, it's gonna be expensive. You're going to have that big restaurant come in that you didn't want, but hey, it's still a restaurant. There's all these things, but at the end of the day, what I have always wanted for Gardner and what I continuously hear is that we want it to be the place it was when we moved here, which was a small-town feel just outside the big city. And I think we keep that. If you go on CFG, I try to avoid it, but if you get on there and somebody has a problem, the community rallies. That has nothing to do with taxes, has nothing to do with any of this other stuff we've talked about tonight. That you can't institute through government. And we have those people. So as long as we continue to be good stewards to one another of this property, government can a little bit stay out of it. And we've done some good things. We got across I-35 in 2018, that was a big goal of mine. When I was campaigning, everybody was still upset about Intermodal. Now we're starting to not talk about it as much. Now we have to use the funds that we have acquired to actually let some of this come to roost. So one of the things we're looking at doing is taking some of our specific sales tax dollars and improving fields, baseball fields for kids to have better tournaments coming in. That'll bring in more tax dollars to flow.
Thank you, and Kelly?
Thank you. I have several dreams for what Gardner will look like. One, getting Destination Downtown going and done so that it is really a place where we can gather as a community and have some fun together and just bond as neighbors and as friends. I really love, as Dawn mentioned earlier, the downtown Wolfman Park area. I love going down there when they have the food trucks and they have the concerts and just seeing the people milling around and enjoying each other's company and supporting businesses down in that area. I would love to see something like that here. I want to see affordable housing so that people can come when they're young families or when they're just starting out, where they can grow, grow their careers, grow their families, grow their houses, invest in something bigger, end up staying and see three, four, or five generations of the family continue to live in Gardner. I would love to grow some relationships with the members of the Johnson County Board of Commissioners so that we can have a seat at that table and have some sort of say or influence in what the county is doing at the county level and the taxation policies they're putting in place there. And one of the things really that I love about Gardner is that small-town feel. When we moved here, the first weekend we moved here happened in Memorial Day and we haven't even met our neighbors yet and they met us up front and they invited us over to their house for a memorial they think they can cook out. And it was probably the most welcome I've ever felt. And like Mark was saying, that really comes to new people. That's not something that you can build with buildings or anything or businesses. It's just the people. And I think making Gardner inviting, making it, you know, a place for your family, making, having those neighbors who reach out to each other is really what I love about Gardner and what I want to say more of.
Thank you, and Dawn?
I actually have a similar response to Kelly's. We moved in and it was Halloween and our neighbors had a Halloween party, didn't know any of their names, but they had us over and we have been good friends with them for 12 years. So I would love for other people to experience that here. And like everyone else has said also, to keep the small-town feel, to bring Destination Downtown, to... to fruition so that we can all enjoy it and we can have our community events.
Thank you. Next question. If elected or reelected, what are your top three priority policy issues? And we're going to start with John on this question.
My top three issues, and I've said it all night, is taxes and generating revenue. My second one is safety. And my third one is the traffic here in GARDER. You know, without revenue, unfortunately, the citizens of GARDER are going to be flipping the bill to pay for all the, the new growth and the infrastructure that needs to be in place, the wastewater. So, we got to have, we have to find ways. That is, in my opinion, the number one priority. At the same time, safety is important because we have to have, our, our police department has to grow as our population grows. So, we have to find ways to, to make sure that we're supporting the police department with the proper revenue and equipment and personnel to keep up with that growth. And we can do these things through proper budgeting, near-term, long-term planning with lifecycle replacement to make sure that we have a good lifecycle replacement system and that we're not just shooting from the hip. And we'll, we'll, you know, find the next year that we have projects that we didn't account for, we didn't place in the budget, and then we got to scramble, find money to pay for it. So, I think good leadership is at the leg.
Thank you. Mark?
Budgets, safety, growth. So, essentially, let me start from the bottom. Growth, we have to continue to manage that growth. Like I said, you're going to come out of the Intermodal in different ways at different times. You're going to be more extended in a certain way and you have to let that come back. So, you have to be willing to grow when you need to and wait when you need to. And at the same time, be cognizant of how that will look in five, 10, 25 years. Safety. KDOT, we have to continue to press them on roads to keep. Very few municipalities have a major highway through their city. That's a problem. It's hard for us to control that and I'm glad that they at least fixed the road, but it's, it's still a thing. We've done leaps and bounds on the police to provide them with the right equipment and to provide the salary that makes them want to come instead. Number one, budget. So, anybody who's ever listened to a council meeting knows that I call government a Ponzi scheme. And you have to be growing to survive next year. If I do nothing, I vote for nothing new and everybody says they want something, but I say, "No, we can't afford it." Next year will cost more. I guarantee you it'll cost you more because of inflation, because of supply chain demands. You have to keep that in check. We've done a very good job of it. We have to finish arresting the downfall that we have right now so that we can come in for a soft landing. And then we have to continue to try to keep that no rate low going forward.
Thank you. Kelly?
Thank you. My top three priorities would be raising the revenue that we need to fund up all the projects here without raising taxes. So, there we have some creative thinking. I don't know, maybe we can implement a adopted road, an adopted street program or something like that. Something that we can do, lots of little projects like that, that will bring in some funds and help alleviate having to raise taxes in the future because we don't want to do that. We all know taxes are high. None of us like that. But I believe that our city council has been doing the best they can, you know, trying to push us over the top. And I do appreciate that, even though I can hold my breath every time I get one of those appraisal notices in the mail. I think my second priority would be responsible stewardship of the funds that we have. That is both in staying in the budget and it's also in bringing in experts to fill the gaps while we do our planning for infrastructure and business needs so that we can plan wisely from the beginning. Third, it's communication, really communicating well in every way that we have available to us with the residents and with the business owners so that we can better advocate for them. I would love to be able to have a town hall once a quarter or so to be able to go face to face, talk with people and find out what their priorities are and what they need from us because not everybody's available on Monday nights. So, to give them another revenue and be able to do that and talk with them.
Thank you. And Dawn?
So, my top priorities would be continuing to develop and smart development. I know that there's a lot happening, kind of all at once, but not really. There's a lot of different developments going in and just to make sure that those are being handled properly. And what, what Kelly said was finding more ways to make revenue here without burdening the taxpayers more. If it's like, like, community events is something that I was thinking of, like yearly annual thing or something like that, which is an idea. But that's definitely something that needs to be looked at too. And then just keeping citizens informed and reminding them that the government works for them. So, the city council is the closest thing the citizens have to the local government. So, I just want to be open and like Kelly said, have town halls just so we're always listening to them and they know that they're being heard.
Thank you. And we'll finish with Steve.
Okay, top three priorities. Well, I'm glad to know they've shifted in the last 12 years because when I came in in 2013, our top priorities were diversifying our policy stock, getting across I-35, and continuing to make our community more attractive for businesses. I think we've done all three of those. I think that the people on this stage that are looking for reelection have done big, major moves to try to get in that direction. Our, our three priorities now are really, really simple. Continue to build momentum. Once you get that boulder going down the hill, you want to keep it pushing and gaining momentum. If you don't push, it'll stop. You want to stop so that bad things happen. If you're not growing in Johnson County, you're dying. I hate to say that. Folks don't like to hear that. We are in Johnson County and we're having to be, we're having to react to what's going on around us in a lot of ways. Okay? So, we have to continue to maintain that growth curve. The growth will bring houses, the houses will bring businesses, the businesses will continue to bring our tax burden down. We have held the line on taxes and we don't have some of the things that our communities have. We don't have a big fancy community center. I'm happy to put a community center on the ballot. I would love to see a placemaking, you know, type of initiative like that. But folks have to understand, if they vote to approve that, then their taxes are going to go up. If they feel that it's worth it to them, I am happy, very happy to champion that initiative. We all talked our first hand that growth has its costs, but it also has its great benefits. And I believe that we're in a position now to be able to augment our infrastructure to put us in that sweet spot, that catch's position to see GARDER reach its potential.
Thank you. This will be our last question before closing statements. We'll start with Mark on this. What differentiates you from the other candidates and makes you the best qualified to serve?
Okay, so, I mean, I can tell you all the leadership decisions I've opened town and things I've done with the community. I can say I have been on council for multiple years, that I'm currently the city council president, have been for four years. I can tell you what I did when I was on EB. But ultimately, what it comes down to is I have a motto, mantra that, "I may not be the smartest person in the room, but I'll never be the dumbest" because I can always research every single thing we're going to talk about. So, I will always be prepared and then I am very diligent about going through the material. I know the budget. I know what we did. I know what this decision entails and what it turns into. I've seen it. I'm privy to expert conversations being president, so I know a lot of things that are on the precipice. There, there's a lot of good stuff going on. We just have to keep doing it. And my logical thinking and my experience up there, I think, will help keep us in the right track, going down the right track.
Thank you. And Kelly?
Thank you. I've got a couple of things. I am a, I do have leadership experience with scouts, with Kansas Car Legal Association, with some nonprofits that I've worked with, running programs for them. So, I do have some project management and that kind of skill. But I think what sets me apart is that I'm a very good listener. And when I listen, I ask really good questions. So, I do like to seek and understand. I want to know what's important to people. And once I know that, I could bring people together. And finding some way through the middle that leaves everybody feeling good about the decision that they came to, being able to take into account all of the opinions and ideas and coming up with a plan and a program that works for everybody. And then once we have that, I'm very good at moving forward and not getting stuck in a vision phase or just in a talking phase, but actually getting things done. So, I am very logical, I'm very organized. And I think that those are both skills that would certainly want to be council and that would make, help me to be a good advocate for the residents and businesses in GARDER.
Thank you. Dawn?
I think what sets me apart is obviously, these guys are much better at words than I am. But I, I work, I work hard. I'm obviously, I'm a good communicator when there is a group setting, when we're trying to get the same thing done. I have been in Monta PTO, like I said, for four years. We put together all kinds of events for the school. And as like GARDER pride, we, we kind of started from scratch and we learned our way. So, I mean, this is the fifth year, so it's... I bring that also to the table that I am deeply rooted in our community, a good listener. I'm personable and I think that's pretty important if you're going to be the city council just for people to want to talk to you and to want to tell us their, their values and stuff.
Thank you. And Steve?
Obviously, my CV is pretty expensive. Been on the council since 2013, was mayor in 2017. I served as the president, vice president, regular council member during that time period. So, I believe that I am absolutely qualified to stay on the council. I want to talk to the, the two about the heart and the passion that is needed to be a leader of a council or be a leader of the community. You will not find a more passionate, vocal, and, and marketing advocate for the community than you're seeing right here with my, with me. And to be honest with you, we have to sell ourselves. There have been bad decisions that were made within this community before, before the mid 2010s. And we've had to slow up strength to a great, to a great extent. Now, we've got a little bit more momentum going. We don't have to work so hard, but you know what? We still have to work hard now. We still have to work hard. We still have to get our name out there. We still have to, you know, pound the pavement, talk to developers, talk to folks that are, that have a, that have a stake or that we want to have a stake in our community to come to GARDER. We know how great GARDER is. We know the people are wonderful. We know our community comes together at times of need, like what happened with Aspen Place. I, I was absolutely floored with what happened with Aspen. And when we all came together, we helped folks out. We helped pay for their rent at our locations. And you know what? Most folks want to come back here. They want to come back here and that's a testament to the greatness of our community. And you won't find a person on this stage that's more passionate about that than me.
Thank you. And John?
I have nearly a 40-year work record inside the government, the military, and the civilian sector with 20 years of executive level experience. I've managed multi-million dollar budgets and hundreds of personnel. Have a bachelor's degree in public administration and a master's degree in security management. And I care very deeply about the citizens of GARDER and the advancement of the city itself. And I stand ready with the citizens of GARDER to, to work to make the city better than it is.
Thank you. Now, I'm going to finish with closing statements. You'll have a minute and a half for your closing statement and we'll start with Kelly.
Thank you again for organizing this and to everybody who's here for, for coming and for everybody who's watching. I love GARDER. My family loves GARDER. And we really want to be here for the long haul. And because we want to be here for the long haul, I want to be a part of making GARDER even better than it is. We would not have moved here if it hadn't started out this great way. It was, it was very inviting. We used to live in Lenexa. And when it came time to move and we talked to each other, we were like, "You know what? Let's look at GARDER." When we first moved to Kansas back in 2007, after I'd been away for 10 years, we intended to move to GARDER. That's where we signed to move it after the last minute. And ever since that time, our plan was to come back to GARDER at some point. And we were able to do that six years ago. So, I want to stay and I want to be a part of making it a better place than it is now, which is the tall work because it's already pretty great. I'm looking forward to getting to know more of the residents and more of the businesses. I know that the election's only about eight weeks from now, so I've got a lot of ground to cover in eight weeks. But no matter what the outcome is, I really enjoy getting to know everybody and look forward to getting to know people even better in two years.
Thank you. Dawn?
I just wanted to reiterate that the government works for the voter and it's about making sure that they feel heard. And I think I would just bring a different perspective to that with collaborating with everyone who lives here and with those who know more about development and infrastructure. And I know the words, but I just love, I would love to just learn more about that. So, I think just I'm a great listener of mine. I'm a great listener and I am very, I like this community. I'm very involved in the community and...
Thank you. And Steve?
Well, first of all, thank you for moderating our debate this evening. Thank you to the, to the Hampton End, GARDER Counter Center. When this first came to town, it was a real revelation for our community. It's great that we have an event space that's in our town. Since, before we, before we became on the council, we only had the senior center. But now we have a wonderful, warm place and we also have this great venue. So, thank you again for allowing us to have this, this conversation. Thank you to the members of the, of the, of the candidate team here. I think a lot of folks, all the folks here care deeply about the community and want to see our community get better. And thank you for putting yourselves out there to, to, to show. It's difficult. It's difficult doing that and we really appreciate that. It's, continuity means something. Being able to show stability within our community, showing stability with the leadership is important for folks out there that want to come and do business with us. I feel like we've done a really good job of keeping that continuity through several years and several elections over the last 10 or 15 years and it's done just made a massive difference. I truly believe that you think pretty significantly about changing course when things are moving in a right, in one direction. Because changing direction might put you into a cycle of skid if you're talking about cars. Let's go ahead and keep the momentum going. Please go off to the website, stevehugh.com, volunteer or help us out with our campaign. We would love to have you as part of the team.
Thank you. John?
I think the, the current city council, all good people, have done, had many years to get us to the point where we're at now. But I think now it's, it's time for a fresh new perspective, new ideas, and new leadership to get us farther than we've ever been. And in November, I'm asking for the citizens of GARDER to go out and vote. And I'm asking for their vote to help me make GARDER more prosperous, more affordable, and safer than it's ever been. And thank you for your time.
And we'll finish with you, Mark.
Okay, so, several things were brought up tonight. There's a lot of things that we can't do anything about. We can't do anything about Johnson County's policies. We can talk to them about it, but we can't control it. We can't control KDOT, we push on them, we can't control them. We can't control taxes that aren't the city's no rate. We can't control taxes that aren't the city's no rate. Everybody has an idea that they want to bring to the table, that's always good, okay? We always have to be open to all the ideas. What sets some of us apart from others that should drive government is that you've got to be willing to make a tough decision when nobody's going to like your answer. It doesn't matter which way you choose, it's a tough decision. You have to be able to find a way to make that decision in a way that benefits everyone in town the most. It won't make everybody happy, never, right? 25,000 people, I can't make you all happy. But I can try to always make sure that this thing over here will benefit the majority. Yes, maybe you didn't want another Taco Bell, but it's bringing in tax revenue, it's bringing in sales tax. You get a benefit from that. I didn't ask Taco Bell to show up, they came, okay? We're doing good things. We've changed the course. They used to not want to come to GARDNER, now businesses do, okay? We've done a good job, we need to keep doing that. I will make up our decisions, I don't mind it, I like the numbers, I dig into these things, it's not a problem. So I just encourage anyone to join the campaign, support me, so that we can keep going forward, and I can keep supporting you. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you very much. And this concludes our forum for tonight. I just wanted to thank the candidates and your willingness to serve in the time that you take away from your careers, and especially your families, to be in events like this and to make it a priority. Really appreciate your willingness to serve and lead for your community. Also, thank you to everyone who joined us in person tonight, where we'll be viewing this recording. I'd like to remind everyone that advanced voting begins Saturday, October 25th, and election day is Tuesday, November 4th. This recording will be available on www.votejoko.com, and you can also find additional candidate information for all the Johnson County communities on that website. So thanks again, and this concludes our program.